The meeting will now come to order. We are now holding the February meeting of Fayette County School Corporations Board of School Trustees. Will you join me in a salute to the American flag?
I move to approve the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving along to the first thing here. We need a motion to approve the agenda as it is submitted.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Hilton?
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
The motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Lori Savoy. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Are there any patron comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on. Move to the consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of January 14th of this year and the executive minutes of January 14th of this year. The personnel report, including retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera. The approval of the January 2014 planes, number 34265 through number 34547. The acceptance of the donation from Contract Industrial Thule for scrap steel valued at $300. Acceptance of donation from Fayette County Foundation Grant for automated external defibrillator pads. And the annual list of outstanding checks more than two years old. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
I'll say the motion.
Mr. Hilton? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Yes. Ms. Betty Tilking is in our audience tonight, and it's because of her that we did receive this donation for the defibrillator. That's a hard word to say. But anyway, we do thank you and we appreciate your being here, Betty, and thank you for your donation.
Thank you. It's an honor of mine.
Yes, right. Okay, thank you. Betty was a school nurse for how many years in our corporation?
About 11 maybe?
11.
I don't know.
Anyway, thanks so much. All right, moving into our action items. We have the personnel report, recommendations for employment. Dr. Bayer?
Thank you, Mr. Burge. Dr. Hodges, members of the board, we just have a couple of items for your consideration this evening. First of all, a new certified staff member that just began here a week or so ago, Adam Carmichael, affiliate science teaching position effective February 3rd at Middle School. Also a support staff member, Vanessa Willis, is a special education assistant at Maplewood effective January 14th. In addition, you received quite a bit of information on superintendent's contract. Would ask for your recommendation for approval of superintendent's contract in a denim as listed. That is the items for your consideration this evening, Mr. Burge.
All right, we have heard the report. What is your pleasure regarding the personnel report?
Mr. President, I recommend we approve the personnel report as presented.
Motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
I'll say a second.
Mr. Hunt? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that would be 6, 4, and 1 against. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bayer. Okay, moving into the recommendation of bus purchases. Dr. Bayer?
Yes, a couple of months ago, we gave permission for Jane Oakley, our transportation director, to seek bids to purchase new buses, and she has a recommendation tonight. You have a memo concerning that. Jane is here, so I'm going to ask her to speak about those purchases. Jane, if you would, please.
Good evening. It's nice and warm in here. That's a good thing. I'm recommending that we purchase through the state bid 32014 ICAE 300 school buses. And what those are, it looks like a conventional school bus that is a little smaller. The total value minus the trade-ins will be $245,541. That is well within the bus replacement appropriation. Also, one 2014 Chevrolet Activity Bus, which is a white bus that you do not have to be certified yellow school bus driver to drive. That's in the price of $42,544. The funds from the Activity Bus will be reimbursed from the Whitewater Technical Career Center as this is replacing their 1999 Activity Bus that they're currently using for their building trades and many of their other classes. I'm also requesting that the payment be made at delivery, but once they're inspected and meet our approval at the bus garage, and that will not be until July of 2014. The three mini-buses will help with two things that we've had not exactly issues, but we were trying to wait out the 12-year bus replacement plan, and that is a waiver. We have asked the Head Start headquarters in Washington to waive the seating that we did not have in the older model buses, and these newer buses do have that appropriate seating, so we will no longer have to ask for that waiver.
So that's the ICAE 300s?
That's the ICAE 300s, yes. It is a sturdier school bus. It's more like a conventional style, not the cutaway vans that Head Start and Special Education Preschool currently uses. More fitting for our conditions here in Fayette County and has a much longer life. A cutaway mini-bus is usually an eight-year lifespan. We have to keep them for 12 years by the state bus replacement plan, so this is going to help with that issue that we have there also.
You said that bus was smaller. Is it smaller seating-wise or just smaller in size?
Smaller in size. It's 30 passenger seating, but it's made for Head Start students with their special seating.
But it's larger than the buses you're replacing.
It is. It's not a cutaway mini-bus like you see now. It looks like a full-size bus. It does sit a little bit lower to the ground for their little legs, and it is a little shorter, but it is a conventional school bus, heavy-duty.
Okay, thanks, Jane.
And if you look at the price of these each compared to what was in the bus replacement plan, you'll see a significant difference, but that's because of the old-style bus versus the new that we're having to replace it with. But we do have sufficient funds to cover the purchase.
And as always, our goal is ultimately the safest possible transportation for our students, and this fits that need.
Well, you've done a great job, Jane.
Thank you.
We all appreciate it.
Our team works very hard, if you remember.
Yes, they do.
I appreciate all of them. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or anything for Jane? Okay, that being the case then, do I hear a motion that we do less purchasing?
I move we do less purchasing. Yes, President?
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll say that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Any discussion? All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Burge.
Now, we have the permission to advertise for summer 2014 projects. Ms. Tollitt?
Thank you, Mr. Burge. Included in your board packet was a list of the summer projects that we have slated for this summer. We're requesting your permission to advertise for these. The majority of them will be funded with capital projects. However, the window replacement at the high school does require Davis-Bacon federal guideline compliance because that project will be completed using the QZAB funds. This is just a request for the advertisement. Any requests for awarded bids will be brought to your attention in the upcoming months. If you have any questions about the list, I'll be happy to answer them.
I just have one. Those storage barns, at one time, we had talked to, or it seemed like there was some discussion about having Building Trades construct those for us. Is that still in the picture? Or is that something?
Did they do one several years ago, but then they got into the house renovation and were not able to help us anymore, and Mr. Grant is retiring.
Okay, I just thought that that one that they did for us, it looked so good, and it looked much sturdier and substantial, and I just, you know.
We've been doing one a year for the past four or five years, and I think they did the first one.
Yes, we did the building of the soccer field, then we did the one of Western.
I just thought it'd be nice if we could use Building Trades, and I like that building better.
Well, he has tried. He reached out to him about the baseball dugouts, but I don't, with the timing of when you need the work done, being in the summer, and then the students aren't here in the summer, that adds a layer of complication to it all, so.
I understand.
I think they built the one out of maple wood, didn't they?
Yes, that's correct. We're always available to help if it fits into our schedule with our other projects, so we work closely with Bob on that when he approaches us on a need.
He does ask before we.
I'm sure he does.
Any other questions or comments? All right, do I hear a motion to give permission to advertise for the summer projects?
So moved.
Mr. Taylor? Do I hear a second?
I'll say the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Next, permission to advertise for requests for proposals, grounds, mowing, and maintenance. Ms. Tollitt again.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. The board members remember, a couple of years ago, we took requests for proposals for mowing each of our properties, including out here on the hill, and we compared those to what our in-house costs were for doing that. We found that outsourcing the back part of Everton, Alquina, the Resource Center, the Claypool Lot, and Orange were going to be more cost-effective for us to outsource those. We had awarded that service agreement to a neatly trimmed landscape. I reached out to them last year, and they were willing to hold their price the same for another year. However, we thought it was in the best interest to go out and competitively quote that again instead of just rolling that forward another year. So we're asking permission to take requests for proposals for mowing services to these properties. We'll be using the same specifications regarding trimming and weed treatment and mowing that we used last time for these specific properties.
Any questions or comments?
Is this an addition to what our people do?
That's correct. Our people take care of the hill here mostly, and that's quite a big job. We have some summer workers that we've hired in the past.
College kids, weren't they?
Yes, and our interns from the Career Center for the next year help out, so we utilize some students. And then these properties down at Everton, the back lot, and getting out to Orange and Alquina took quite a bit of our maintenance personnel's time to transport the mowers out there and/or follow the big mower, the tractor, down to Everton, so it was taking away from their maintenance duties. So that's why we've elected to go to outsourcing these properties.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What is your pleasure regarding the permission to advertise for the proposals for grounds, mowing, and maintenance?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Hilton?
I move to approve the advertising.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
Mr. Jones? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Financial expenditure goals. Ms. Tollitt?
Thank you, Mr. Burge. This is an annual requirement by the State of Indiana according to Code 20425-3-6 that was established in 2008 whereby school corporations are required to establish financial goals. Basically, the goals that we've created are that we work to drive as much of our money into the classroom instead of to overhead. However, our goals, as you can read them, have been the same. The State of Indiana considers transportation, food service, and security a part of overhead We at Fayette County Schools believe that children who are hungry, who are not safely transported, don't learn as well. But that's the state's position, that those are overhead costs. You're required annually to adopt financial goals, which we do, and then they're published as a part of the performance report that's published in the newspaper. And let's see, just to give you a point of reference, the average cost of educating a student in the State of Indiana for the 12, 13 school year was $6,516.36. Fayette County Schools was a little bit over that at $6,605, so less than $100 off the state average. And that's what they want your goal to be, is close to the state average, so we are.
On our student count, Jane, when we report that for funding to the state, what is it that the state allows per student? Is it the same as that, cost to educate a student?
Not necessarily.
Why don't those two match?
Well, there...
The state is definitely advocating.
Yeah. Well, there's an awful lot of unfunded mandates, but we probably shouldn't get into that. The formula's a little more complicated than that. I mean, it costs $6,600 here last year for a student. Let's take a look. I don't have the highest school corporation, but it was over $10,000 a student, so there's a wide variety in what the cost per student is. This does include charter schools as well. Schools receive a complexity index on top of the base formula for higher poverty areas, which we do receive benefit of that because of our poverty, our higher poverty. I think the amount per student is about $4,900, $48 to $4,900, and you can get up to a third more than that for the complexity index as your poverty rate goes up higher, so.
Thank you. I didn't put you on the spot, I guess.
That's okay. I'm not sure that answered your question, but it just...
I think the unfunded mandate statement answered my question.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Then do I hear a motion to approve the financial expenditure goals?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
I'll say the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. And we have the request for the approval of the Maplewood window bids. Ms. Tollitt again.
Thank you. I think this is it for me. A couple of months ago, you approved us receiving bids for the Maplewood window project. If you recall, two years ago, the front section of the window, the Maplewood windows, were completed, both sides of the wing. Last year, the computer room, the library, and the kitchen area were completed as phase two. This is phase three. There were 22 M7 windows, and that's basically the classroom windows for the back wing at Maplewood. Then in the hall, there is one larger window, which was identified in the specifications we had completed two years ago as an M1. The total cost, base bid and alternate, is $120,775. There are sufficient funds remaining in the multi-school bond refinancing to cover this, and there will still be funds left over after that that we will need to spend by the end of the year. So we'll be looking for projects. Quite honestly, we've tried to use bigger projects, many related. We did the elevator at Frazee out of those funds. I'm hoping that the ADA openers for the various buildings that were a part of what we're going to take bids for will come in at about the amount we have left, and we can then use that to upgrade the ADA door openers at some of our buildings. But anyhow, we have sufficient monies for this project that would complete the Maplewood window project, so we would like to proceed with it. Awarding the bid to Brian's Glass, they were the only bidder, and they did phase two of the window project last year. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Again, Brian's Glass is from where?
Out of Centerville.
Centerville.
Uh huh.
Okay, do you have any other questions or comments? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the Maplewood window bid?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Second?
I'll say it then, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Education Hall of Fame Selection Committee, Dr. Hodges.
Board Policy 3.51 states that the school board shall establish a committee of five persons to the committee to select individuals for the Education Hall of Fame. Tonight, I'm asking you to affirm the appointment of Cindy Perez, Ben Felver, and Ron Spurlock for a two-year term. They'll be joining Laura West and myself to form that committee.
All right, you've heard Dr. Hodges' report about the Hall of Fame Selection Committee. What is your pleasure regarding?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Hilton?
I move to approve his recommendations for the committee.
Thank you, sir. Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll say it then, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Next is the 2013-14 Revised School Calendar, and Dr. Hodges again.
Board, as you're aware, we have missed a few days this year. Current totals, we've missed 10 school days. Something that goes unreported a lot is the number of two-hour delays that we've had. We've had nine two-hour delays. That's 18 hours of missed instructional time, which translates to just a little over two and a half days in addition to the 10 days that we've missed. And so the challenge has been, how do we make up that lost instructional time? And that's been the primary focus when I've looked at that, is how do we regain as much instructional time as we can? A secondary piece, but we have talked about that, has to do with our hourly employees. When we're not at school, they're not receiving their pay. And so as we look at, what are we going to do? I think we need to be sensitive to that, but our primary driver needs to be the lost instructional time. As you are aware, I've thought about a lot of things, and I've shared those with you, everything from Saturday schools to, I was never serious about spring break, but it keeps coming back that that's a serious part of the recommendation. That really was never on the radar. But how do we do this? And I started to work on a plan, on a proposal, before Superintendent Ritz talked to the state board about some flexibility that she was going to allow schools, and it fits quite nicely with what I was trying to do. I've talked to cabinet, obviously. I've talked to building principals, and I've talked to some of the other superintendents across the state that I know that are dealing with this and have similar views on instructional time that I do, trying to figure out how we're going to do that. And tonight, I met with teacher discussion group, and so the proposal I'm going to give you varies just slightly from what I had sent out to you earlier. But the pieces that we have agreement on is that we're going to use the two make-up snow days that are in the calendar, the calendar that you approved before. We are going to use the 14th as a professional development day as listed in the calendar. We think professional development days are important. We, as part of this proposal, are going to see why it's even more important. I think that we give teachers an opportunity to plan for the changes that we're going to be recommending in the calendar. Beginning February the 24th and continuing through April the 24th, I'm proposing that we extend the day on Monday through Thursday by one hour. That we start the Applied Skills I-Step Test the week of March the 10th. Spring break will go on as scheduled. Now, I had told you before that I was going to recommend that we would not be in session on Good Friday. The teachers tonight asked if we would reconsider that, and I shared with them that I would ask for your discussion and input on that. But after talking to them, one piece that complicates that a little bit is that it's a paid holiday for our 12-month employees. By contract with our custodial maintenance bus driver, or bus mechanic union, if we require those employees to work on that day, that's a time and a half. So that's an increased cost to us. I don't know that we could work with them on a memorandum of understanding, that we would put in a floating holiday, similar to what we do with Veterans Day. Once upon a time, Veterans Day was a paid holiday. We now attend school on Veterans Day, and we float that where they could take that at a time that's more convenient to them. If we would be in session on Good Friday, we might not have to move graduation. If we're in school on Good Friday, school for students would end on Wednesday, the 28th, and for teachers, the 29th. Now, Connersville High School traditionally has waited until all the finals, all the grades, everything is in before they calculate who the valedictorian is, who the top 10 are, and those things. So we need to make sure that they have time to check and double-check to make sure that we're recognizing the appropriate students. Also, that students have an opportunity to prepare the presentation as the valedictorian address and to practice for graduation. If we end on the 28th and we don't miss any more days, and that's the problem with this, we don't know how many more delays we're going to have, we don't know if we're going to miss any more days, but if we didn't miss any more days, we could dismiss, we could end school on the 28th. I have not filed for the waiver days yet. There are two waiver days there. What I told the teachers is I would like to hold those, and if we miss another day, use those for the next two days that we miss. And so that makes that 28th or 29th date a little bit more solid for us. If someone can tell me how many days we're going to miss, then we can really firm this up. So the question that I think we need to discuss before we discuss the rest of this proposal is, what's your feeling on attending school on Good Friday? I know that this community honors Good Friday. They do have community service. I know that this community honors Good Friday, they do have community service, that is a well-attended service. This is an unusual year. And when I talked to folks on the calendar committee that we're going to talk about for next year, when I asked the question about Good Friday, they wanted us to honor Good Friday and not attend school, but when I talked to the teachers tonight, who really were more of the teacher leadership, they were saying that they would like, under these unusual circumstances for this year, they would like to see us attend school on Good Friday. So, what's your pleasure?
What's the ministerial group think?
Well, I have not talked to them, because I wasn't intending to recommend that we go to school on Good Friday.
I think they should have a little input on our decision on that, because they've got all plans, something will fit for it.
I do think it's important that we make a decision tonight on graduation, because I think there are people who are waiting out there. We have, as I've shared with you before, the high school has contacted the folks who we order announcements from, they are holding, printing those off, until we can give them the exact date of graduation. And I was going to recommend June the eighth. We have a number, I don't remember exactly what, but we have several seniors who will be going into the military. We do have one that if we graduate on the eighth, that will be after the time he's already inducted to the military. We have some students that may be needing to get off to some summer school classes that start on June the second. So, there are some complications with this, where if we could hold the first, that would make, you know, that would be helpful to them. But we're just kind of at, you know, that breaking point.
As much as I hate to suggest it, what if we went ahead and considered the two days that the state's going to give us, or will allow us? I hate to, I hate the thought of losing the instructional time, but it would give us a little breathing room in the event that we could still have time to consider this, are we going to go to school Good Friday or not?
We...
And at the same time, we could make a decision tonight.
If we hold those until we miss another day, it accomplishes basically the same Does it not?
So, you're saying the teachers do want to take, go to school on Good Friday?
Well, the people I met with tonight indicated that. I think that they had done a survey, and I'm not sure what percentage of their teachers took part in that survey.
One hundred and twenty-seven out of one hundred ninety members responded to the survey. Of those one hundred twenty-seven, only twenty-two wanted to take Good Friday off. The other hundred and five said, "Let's go to school on Good Friday and prepare the kids for I-Step."
What's your total membership like?
Total membership is about a hundred ninety.
Hundred and ninety members.
I just wanted to ask here, okay, we're really bonding ourselves tightly.
Yes, we are.
Really tightly, and what would happen if, if we had more days, then what would we do with graduation? Then you have said that it's going to be the second, but you've got all this other problem to deal with, and, you know, and I hear the community, you know, they say, "You can't change graduation, you know, it's set in stone," you know? So, I, you know, it concerns me that we're so tight here, and we've got February and March, and I was sharing with Dr. Hodges during my teaching career, twice after spring break, did we have snow days?
It's not unusual to have bad weather during boys' basketball section, you know? So, that's just the reality of it.
It's tradition.
Yeah.
Got to snow.
So, that, the eighth gives you breathing room, there are some downsides to that, to the eighth. But all the other proposals make that really, really tight for us. And if we would have, continue to have the severe weather that we've had, we most likely would be coming back and asking to move it anyway.
What's your recommendation?
What's my recommendation? You've had my recommendation that we will not be in school on Good Friday, and that we move graduation to the eighth. But I did commit to the teachers, when I talked to them tonight, they asked that I let you have conversation, and you folks represent the community and can help make that decision.
Mr. Judd, I don't mean to put you on the spot, would you like to speak any way about this, your feeling about it?
We're flexible either way. If we do miss more days, then it would be a really hard job to figure out who's valedictorian, who actually gets a real diploma, who gets to walk. But if Wednesday is the last day, then we could get it done for graduation on the second.
But if we went beyond that, then...
You go beyond Wednesday, that's going to be too tough.
So, you're saying to go to school on Good Friday? Is that what you're saying?
No, he's not speaking of that, he's talking about graduation. He was asked specifically about graduation, and what's really, what's the last day that students could be in session and still be able to have traditional graduation on June first? I think he's answered that question. Here's the reality. Whatever you decide, and if you want to say you endorse totally what the superintendent says, that's fine, somebody's not going to be happy. If you go to school on Good Friday, somebody's not going to be happy. If you don't go to school on Good Fridays, somebody's not going to be happy. And it's about, what goals are we trying to accomplish, and what does the best job of accomplishing that goal? The recommendation that I've given you does a great job of recovering lost instructional time. It also goes a long way to help those employees that have lost wages because of the weather. It helps restore them in pretty good shape through that. The graduation, moving it to the eighth, will negatively impact a few people. But you run the risk, if you move it to the first, that we might be inconveniencing a lot more people if we have enough bad weather that we can't make this work. It's not, it's not a clear-cut choice, it's not an easy choice. It's what do you think is in the best interest of Fayette County School and the children who are D.B. bound to serve.
What is the thought if perhaps we did have more bad weather? Could we go beyond April the twenty-fourth with the one hour after school?
Well, the reason for picking the twenty-fourth, which is the last Thursday before I-Step starts, and so, we were trying to compact as much instruction in prior to that multiple choice I-Step piece, which counts for about seventy percent of the I-Step scoring. I would not recommend that you have extended day during the testing cycle, and then it becomes, then we get out of the routine and trying to start that back up again. I don't know exactly what you would accomplish, anything's possible. According to what the state has given us, we actually have till, I want to say June thirtieth. We have until late in June to file the paper to get all this worked out, if you understand what I'm saying. The waivers that they had, they said those have to be filed for by June first. Altering the schedule, altering the calendar, as I've suggested this evening, takes school board approval to do that, but we also have at least till the middle of June to submit that paperwork.
When is I-Step again?
Well, we have an Applied Skills portion that starts, we're going to start that the week of March the tenth, but the Multiple Choice portion starts April the twenty-eighth, unless the state moves that testing window. But listening to the conversation with Superintendent Ritz and the State Board, I don't think that they're looking to extend that window yet.
When you say extend, would it be pushed on into May?
What they did with the Applied Skills, the Applied Skills were supposed to go from March third to March twelfth. They are going to open the window on March third, but they're going to give us till the twenty-first to finish that part. If we work with the Multiple Choice, my guess would be they, if they did anything, they would extend that window again into that week of the twelfth of May. The problem is, for every day that they extend the window, that adds another, at least another day to when you get your responses back. And so, if they extend from a Friday to a Monday, you count Saturday and Sunday, so that's another three or four days before they get it back. Now, the State Board talked about a quick turnaround, and the only thing that I have a hard time with is, we saw how quick that was this year, so...
But the other thing they've added this year is a week of what's called Core Link. They are working on assessment items that are common Core-like, when they decide that Indiana wants to write their own tests. So, we have, I mean, it's not optional, a week after the Multiple Choice items, which is now into the third week of May, we'll still be testing, and it'll be testing on what they call pilot items, and it'll be all grades three through eight. So, if they push it back, we're, Memorial Day, still trying to get through the testing process. So, I don't think they're going to move the Multiple Choice, just because of that Core Link.
Yeah, and I would agree with that.
I think it's going to probably stick.
What is the logic on part of the teachers that they want to do instruction on Good Friday?
It picks up another day, and that is a day ahead of I-Step, and that's, I think that's primarily the thought, but then it also shortens when we get out, and also makes the June one graduation possible, at least on paper.
How does that fit in with our contracted days for our teachers?
It really has not an impact on them, what statute indicates that when you, when teachers miss days, or when schools dismissed on days for inclement weather, teachers will make those days without additional compensation. So, we have a contract with teachers that is essentially for one hundred eighty-four days, and whenever we have those, that's when they would be paid. In this proposal, the extended hours picks up four days for us, and that's flexibility we've never had before.
In all this conversation, I noticed that you didn't talk about Saturday. Is there a reason why?
Yeah, the reason why, we've talked to folks that have had Saturday classes, attendance is poor, and no one wants to be there, and it's not a reproductive day from folks that have experienced that. If we would have written originally into that calendar that to let people know ahead of time that that was a real possibility, it might be different, but we just did not think that that would be a valuable day.
So, your recommendation is?
You had my recommendation that school will not be in session on Good Friday, and that we move graduation June the eighth.
Okay, thank you.
What were those numbers on the teachers again, the votes?
One hundred twenty-seven teachers out of approximately one hundred ninety responded to the survey. Twenty-two voted to be off on Good Friday, so a hundred and five voted to attend Good Friday. And as Dr. Hodges said mostly, it was to help ensure that they can prepare students for I-Step, an extra full day of instruction before I-Step.
Those are some pretty positive numbers. A hundred and five out of one hundred and ninety.
This is a toughie, isn't it?
Yeah.
Wow.
I mean, if we knew for a fact there wasn't going to be more snow days, but the unknown, that's the problem.
Yeah, and the problem is, and the problem is, we can't wait too long to begin on the graduation piece, we have to make that decision. I think we need to make that tonight.
What are some of our surrounding schools doing? Have they made decisions? I know some are doing that, because I heard it on the Indianapolis station just today, I think, or...
I'm really only aware of what two schools are doing, and I'm not exactly sure how one is. Westfield, Washington, they are extending their days, and I don't know how many days they're extending. One of our neighbors close by has an option, because they have early release PLCs K through twelve, and so, they're doing away with their early release time and picking up fifteen minutes to make up the amount of time that they've lost. But they have already moved graduation out a week. I don't know if they'll go back and revisit that or not. I have, I don't have documentation, I have heard of others that are moving graduation out a week, but to tell you who they are and how many, I don't have that information.
How's this impact vocational schooling?
Well, it will have some impact, especially if all the schools feeding into something different.
Right.
One of the things that helps us this year, we're trying to correct for next year, but in the morning, Connersville High School sends about two hundred and thirteen students to vocational center. In the afternoon, we only send about thirteen students to the vocational center. We're trying to balance that out, because that creates some other issues. But for this year, if everybody stays on their same schedule but us, we have about thirteen students, we need to figure out how we're going to do that, and Randy and Milt are working on a schedule that makes sense. But now that you brought that up, it does complicate things too, because the vocational center teachers are on our teacher contract. And so, if they have no students, and our teachers in our other buildings are staying an hour extra, what do we do with them? I don't have an answer for that. There is no perfect plan. There are some soft spots in anything that you can try to put out there. We just have to figure out what we believe is truly in the best interest of the majority of our students. Did I misspeak, gentlemen? It's not unusual, there are some days throughout the year that some schools take off for this, and others don't. I think we're all pretty close to ending the same time, but it's not unusual to have some schools finish up a little earlier than others at the Career Center. But, you know, Milt, if you, that'll put you on the spot, if you want to speak, that's fine.
Well, you said earlier that Randy has a schedule, and Randy and I have looked at that schedule, and I see no problem with that, if you go with an extended day. Our teachers would just remain till four fifteen, just like the high school teachers would. We would have a handful of CHS students there working with them, but other than that, they would work in their lab areas, and their planned period is at the end of the day as well. So, that would be pushed back to Dr. Hodges.
And I will tell, I will tell you what was in the email that I sent to you and just shared with you about what I was going to recommend this evening. I did put that out to all the superintendents at the Career Center, and one responded with their plan, and I've not heard back from the others as of five forty-five, or four forty-five this evening, and we checked before we started this evening.
You've got these serious looks on your face. It is serious. So, does anyone have a thought?
I mean, it's kind of hard to go against the teachers, I guess, in my opinion. This was a pretty stark numbers, a hundred and twenty-seven and a hundred and five said yes to go on Good Friday, so...
But if we miss more snow days, it's going to have to change anyway.
Exactly.
What would...
Let me make this motion. I know that we go to school on Good Friday, extend graduation to June the eighth.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion has been made by Mr. Jones and by Mr. Spurlock, that we go to school on Friday, Good Friday, and move graduation to the eighth of June, correct?
That's the motion.
Okay. Any thoughts or discussion?
So, cover all the other things, do we, or are we going to accept the motion?
Well, I mean, I would assume that the extended hour date was going to happen regardless. Yeah, that does encompass something, I suppose. Would you like me to restate the motion? Laurie will have to, or Ron will have to draw a second first.
Yeah, okay. Ron withdraws his second.
I'll withdraw my motion and restate. I know that we extend the school day by one hour from February twenty-four through April twenty-four, for Monday through Thursday, along with in going to school on Good Friday and moving graduation to June the eighth.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And you'll second that. Okay, the motion has been made.
The motion has been made that we go on Good Friday, that graduation be June the 8th, that will add one hour to the school day from February 24th through April the 24th, Monday through Thursdays.
And then school for students will be out May 28th. Is that correct, Dan?
Barring, 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 yes.
Right, right.
With that motion, that would put graduate, that would put, that would put the last student day on May 28th time, I guess.
And that probably makes sense, because we could have another snow day or two.
I, I, from a discussion standpoint, since we have said, you know, I, I make the motion because, yes, I, I, you know, we have to move on this. We have to make a decision.
Right.
And we need to get, you know, we gotta give ourselves some, we gotta give the school system some ability to, to absorb additional days if, in fact, we have them, and if we don't have them, we don't have them. But the likelihood of that, based on what we've experienced so far, is, you know, I, as much as I don't care to, to see us in school on Good Friday, I don't know that we really have a lot of choice in this particular year. And I don't relish the fact of moving graduation day a week either, yet.
Well, it makes sense in the big picture that, to address the unknowns, and also...
If not, we'll be back here addressing it again.
Exactly. And that would be our second point, yeah. And, and we don't have to do, go through this again. Okay, so we got a motion and a second?
And do I hear any other discussion or question?
What's due to non-certified staff?
To get an extra hour, right? They'll, they'll be pretty well, um, restored. The, the, the challenge would be is trying to work something out with, uh, with those 12-month employees that, that Good Friday is a holiday. We'll have some work to try to work with that union. But, uh, it treats them about as, as well as we can treat them, I think.
They won't lose a lot of compensation?
No. I don't believe so.
Any other questions or comments? Then I believe we're ready to vote. All of those in favor of, uh, Mr. Jones's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Myself.
Okay, we have six, four, and one against. Okay, um, we're ready to move into our discussion items, which is next year's school calendar.
Yeah, it was pointed out to me today that there was a time we didn't build snow days into the calendar. In those years, we didn't have snow days in the calendar. We didn't miss any days. By this year, we put snow days back in and look at the mess that we have. What you have is a calendar that comes to you from the, uh, Calendar Committee that met. It's pretty much what we have this year on paper, with one exception. This does set graduation for June 7th, which gives us all the flexibility that we wrestled with tonight. And so this is for discussion only. Uh, this does, uh, give us a week off in October, and it does have a couple long weekends built around, uh, in February and, uh, in April, around Easter again, so... The plan would be, uh, unless there's discussion or desire to make changes in this, we'll bring this back to you next month for, for your approval.
So what are the rest, you know, Mr. Nye?
Nothing. It's a discussion.
But there is plenty of time between student day and graduation on this calendar, isn't there?
Yeah, but it could turn out to be just like this year.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I guess you can't plan on the ifs, I suppose, that far ahead.
Can't forecast the weather, no.
Right. So this is discussion only. So does anyone else have questions or comments? Your Calendar Committee was in full agreement on it?
Unanimous approval.
Unanimous? Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions? Again, we don't do any action on this. We just discuss it. So we ready to move on? Okay. Are, are there any, uh, public comments, persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, or comments regarding, uh, anything other than personnel or students? Seeing none, we move on to the report items. Superintendent's discussion groups, seeing none. Principals, directors reports, seeing none. Director Personnel Report?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Just a couple quick things. You approve the, um, retirements of 15 different individuals tonight. Several were administrators. I think 10 were teachers, and we had a secretary in there as well. We'll have more coming, but those years total, uh, 387 years so far of service with just those 15 people. So that's quite a bit of service we're gonna be missing, and we thank all those folks. Uh, and we'll thank them tech, publicly, uh, in May on the, uh, retirement day. We'll invite you to, and to celebrate that. Uh, we'll have a retirement meeting coming up later on this month. We'll adjust the times based on tonight's decision on calendar. But we wanna meet with, um, retirement retirees who are contemplating, are pretty close to making a decision if they haven't already done so. And so we'll be meeting and kind of finalizing some retirement, future retirements as well. And then finally, we have an, we have been on tour here the, this week and, uh, next week, week after, on our new support staff evaluation. I'll try to bring you a little brief update on that either at the March or April board meeting, an idea what that looks like. It's different than the old system where you just had a checklist, one page, and we've made some checks. This one is rubric-based, uh, much more intense, and we think fair to the employees, hard to evaluate them more fairly. And it also involves a compensation piece as well, and I'll just leave it at that for tonight. But we'll provide more information for you, uh, here in one of the next future board meetings, so... And that's all I have tonight. Mr. Burchett, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Director of Finance Report?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Briefly, um, included in your packet is a document that's entitled Review of Accounts Available Voucher Register. I've provided this to board members annually for the last couple of years. It's kinda handy to have this laid beside the voucher register. So as you have questions about the fund or that, you can refer to it, and that might help answer some of your questions. So if you don't find it in your packet, let me know, and we'll get you another copy of it. But just a reminder that that was in there. Thank you.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent's Report?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I just wanted to invite school board members. Um, we've been working hard at the elementary level on our data walls, and all the schools now have, um, each teacher has outside their hall, our, outside their door room, there are, there's some kind of data, and a lot of it relates to the goals the teachers have set on student achievement. We hear a lot about growth now. Teachers have grown quite a bit this year in how to monitor student growth, and so they're displaying that in a very discreet way. It's not by student name. There's codes, there's numbers. But you get an overall picture of how students are progressing. So I would just invite you to give the principal, call any principal of the elementaries, and just ask for a data walk and take a little tour. It doesn't take very long, and I think you'd be impressed. It's, um, a research-based method of monitoring student progress, and I've heard great conversations between the students and the teachers and what they're learning and what they are honing in on based on their new knowledge of what they're learning about, what kids have learned, so... Just wanted to invite you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report?
Board, I'd like to, um, schedule a special board meeting on March the 18th. If we could do that about 5 o'clock, it will just be, uh, a two-item agenda. We approved advertising a number of summer projects. We'd need to get together and, and, uh, award those contracts so we can move forward, so... 18th, 19th, or 20th is, is, are the best dates. I just picked the 18th, and I chose 5 o'clock. If that's not a good time for you, if you'd rather do it around a lunch meeting or do it later in the evening.
What date would it be?
It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It's a week after our March meeting. Our March board meeting's the 11th. This would be the next Tuesday. If that, if that ends up being a real conflict for you, let, let Cindy know. And there's, uh, an announcement. I, I talked in the state of the schools. I talked to about a health clinic or wellness center that we were trying to get established here for, uh, the employees that are on our health plan. Fayette County School Corporation, that clinic is going to open March the 17th. We were able to, uh, the trust was able to reach a deal with Fayette Regional Hospital. So it's a, I think it's a win-win. Uh, we'll be able to have a clinic, and, and, uh, most school clinics that get started, uh, start with limited hours, just 18 hours, trying to help people understand how this works. They can go to the clinic for, for their normal doctor's visit, get their normal prescriptions, taken care of with no out-of-the-pocket expense. It's a wonderful thing for them. But, uh, Fayette Regional has indicated they're gonna be operating that in a clinic they already have established, and that clinic will be open for 40 hours for us. And so if you can't make those time slots that are designated Fayette County slots, there'll be some other time slots that they go in. It'll still be no cost to the employee out of their pocket for the, for that visit. And I think that's, that's a great benefit to that. We'll be having some informational meetings that, the meeting to finalize all that just happened yesterday afternoon, so we'll be having some informational meetings and trying to help people understand the benefit of that and, and try to drive as much business that way as we can.
Did you say the location of the clinic?
It's gonna be on Virginia Street, 2025, it's right, right there by the hospital. So it's a very convenient location for the majority of our staff.
Will that include retirees or retirees that are on school insurance, or does that still have to be worked out?
Anyone who's on school insurance will be able to do that. Yes.
You're in, Ralph.
No. Beyond.
Yeah. I, I think that's gonna be a great benefit for, for a number of our employees. I'm really happy. It's taken a little while to pull that all together, but I'm, I'm excited about being able to roll that out for our folks. Thank you tonight. I know, I know that was a tough decision, but there's, there are a lot of tough decisions that we have to make as we go along, and, and, uh, thank you for the time you took in coming to conclusion on that.
Okay, thank you. We move into the Good of the Cause. Anyone have anything they wanna share? I have one thing real quickly. I'd just like to say thank you to our Fayette County Public Library. Those ladies, uh, well, everyone there are very supportive of school and arrange their calendars to go along with ours, because they really want to be involved in our children's, uh, reading. And I think that's a good thing. So I just hats off to our library for that. With that being, I have your motion that we adjourn. Mr. Hilton, do I hear, Mr. Spurlock, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and the motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.